Wednesday, in case anybody has lost track of time.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, so, uh, looking at our agenda, um, do you want to go through the remote connection stuff again?
Yeah, if you would indulge me, Maggie, I, uh, Mitch actually put together a nice little, um, spiel for the DRB meeting. I thought I would just read that to, to the audience and, and you guys. Um, so here it is. Uh, so we're holding this meeting remotely, uh, due to the current state of emergency for COVID-19, uh, and in best conformance with the governor's stay-at-home order. For those of you, uh, viewing either through this technology, uh, which it doesn't appear anyone is at the moment on this call, besides the commissioners, or if you're viewing, uh, via the V-Cam livestream, uh, we are using Zoom to provide public access, uh, through a link, which is available on the agenda for this meeting, posted on the website. Please be patient with us during the meeting. Uh, this remote format is a little different, and, um, sometimes it takes some time to make sure we hear people. We do, we do welcome public comment, and there are a couple of ways to connect to the Zoom meeting, uh, which are, uh, listed on the agenda. We have disabled the chat function of this technology, um, and the ability to annotate, um, uh, screens that are shared, and we've done that to prevent, um, hackers and, and, um, people from disrupting the meeting, which has happened in other, uh, other towns. So there's no chat, uh, function. We ask that, uh, this goes for all of us, but we ask that you mute yourself when you're not speaking. That way, if there's any sound in the background in your room that you're in, um, we don't hear that or get feedback, and just remember to unmute yourself when you want to speak. It's important, especially for Barbara, who's on the phone with us tonight, uh, to identify yourself when you speak. I think Barbara's gonna recognize all of the commissioners' voices, but if we have anyone else join us by phone who can't see us, um, it's important to identify yourself when you speak. And, um, I think that's it. Uh, I will manage the meeting and try to help people with muting and unmuting if they're having difficulties, and, uh, removing anyone if, uh, there's some effort to disrupt the meeting. Back to you, Maggie.
Okey-dokey. So, um, first item on the agenda is, um, agenda, or second item, uh, is agenda changes? And does anyone have any agenda changes?
No, this is Barbara. Could you just tell me who is in the meeting?
Sure, um, I am, Marie, uh, Denver, and, uh, you, and, yeah, that's it.
And Dennis.
So we're just barely a quorum.
And actually, uh, it looks like Rolf is just in the process of joining us. I just admitted him to the meeting, and I believe he's connecting to audio.
Okay, there we go. Hi, Rolf.
Apologies. When there's a screen share with the agenda up right now, it's a little hard to see everybody, so as soon as we get to the first substantive agenda item, I will take this off, so it's easier to see, but...
Okay, so third, um, so, and, and we do have one, uh, addition, Alex, to the agenda that you sent out.
Yeah, I sent that to you, Maggie, for the rest of the commission's benefit. Um, I'd like to add, under other business, a discussion of reappointment of our zoning administrator.
Okay, and then, uh, third agenda item is public comments for non-agenda items. But it looks like, uh, no public, no comments. So, um, let's go ahead and, and dive into our architectural and streetscape design standards. And we are on page six, the last page, um, of the document that Alex has, has, uh, sent out. Village area architectural and streetscape design standards.
Yes, so per the, uh, minutes that Sal put together, um, she indicated that we had a few more on that, uh, last page to discuss, and one was actually, um, multi-story buildings, but we had previously addressed that in an earlier standard, so, um, nothing more to say about that. And then, uh, the last two items were, uh, items that Rolf had done some work on, and, and the first one was, uh, regulating the maximum length of building facades. And then, after that, uh, having a minimum frontage build-out requirement. So, uh, the first one is exactly as it sounds, uh, a desire to limit the ability to have very monolithic building facades with, that don't have any articulation in them. So the language that, uh, is in your draft talks about, uh, a building front facade not exceeding 100 feet, uh, with the exception of industrial buildings in the Village Northeast. And we can, we can talk about whether that exception should be there or not. And that front facades shall be interrupted at intervals of 25 feet or less by a change in the plane of the front facade by at least two feet in depth, or by an entry into the building, or a passage through to the rear of the building. So again, in a nutshell, that's saying, um, the building front facade can't exceed 100 feet, and that, uh, within that allowance, every 25 feet, there needs to be something that breaks it up. And Rolf, if you want to speak further to that, you helped draft that. I just wanted to characterize it.
Yeah, you know, um, I, I, you know, this is a topic that, uh, you could probably do an extensive amount of, uh, scrutinizing and looking at existing building patterns, not just in Heinsberg, but just about anywhere. And so, I, I confess, you guys, that, um, there was a little bit of, okay, let's pick a number, and, um, and I did some very rough sketches, and then, how would you divide this up, or what might, say, for example, some changes in plain B? I mean, a good example of a building that's probably, close to 100 feet wide is probably Kinney's. I think it's actually a little bit, a little bit longer than 100 feet on its street frontage. Does it have the kind of articulation we're talking about? Kind of, not really. Um, you know, it has an entry down there on the south corner. A lot of the existing historic buildings in town, you know, especially on the west side, over on the Charlotte Road side, south of Charlotte Road, some of those Italianate buildings. None of those, those are, those are mostly in the area of 40 or 50 feet wide, not all of them, but roughly. You get like even Jerus, the metal shop, um, you know, those buildings, there, there's sort of several buildings. The, the main one is probably a little over 100 feet. This is just giving you a sense of scale, I guess. So anyway, 100 feet, sounds like it was plucked from the air, but, um, it had some reference to what's been built in town, or at least in that part of town recently. Even, say, for example, the school, um, the old high school, the three-story structure next, you know, part of the elementary school is probably about 65 feet wide, that building. So, 100 feet, but I've, I've certainly seen, uh, well-done developments. I was just out in Colorado visiting my son. There's a nice little town about the size of Heinsberg, quite different, um, and sort of a, a very lengthy, almost block-long building, two, three floors high, um, but broken up in some sort of rhythm, had a kind of, uh, arcade or a place you could walk undercover. So it was a good example of a building that was longer than 100 feet by a significant amount, I would say, but it kind of went with the bend in the road, and it did have, you know, sort of a regular rhythm of entries, penetrations through the building to a parking lot in the back, storefront stuff. So, yeah, you know, was it scientific research? No. So I think it's a reasonable dimension, probably for most things, um, but, um, you know, deserves more scrutiny, I guess, is what I'd say. Hardly the last word here, you know? Is that helpful?
Yeah, it is helpful. This is Maggie, and, and one, one question I, I had, and, and you just mentioned it, actually, is, would we consider, uh, porches, arcade, to, to provide relief, the kind of relief that we're looking for, to the monolithic building side? Because I, you know, I think about that, the Kinney sort of in a, in a way, it's kind of, no, I guess I was thinking of the front, but, you know, that they do have a, a bit of a porch there.
And that helps. It's worth noting.
Though I, I, I just wonder if we want to consider that for, um, you know, uh...
As, as one of those distinguishing or...
Yeah, cha-change in plane or entry or...
Yep.
I think the way the language is written, this is Alex, um, I think the way the language is written, it makes it clear that if it is, if it's an entry, it, it counts as a, as a way to break up that requirement that every 25 feet there be something.
But what about, excuse me for interrupting, but, um, I'm, I, I think I'm remembering correctly one of the, uh, Haniford, um, diagrams or whatever, illustrations, um, along one of the sides, there was no entryway. Um, there was no entryway, but there was a covered porch, for a good, a good part of, I might be misremembering, but does that sound familiar, that they have?
Yeah, but I, I think the better example is the one that we already have, that's, that is Kinney Drugs, right? Because the, the, I think what you termed, uh, like a covered porch or an arcade, in front of Kinney's is not at the entrance, right? The entrance, as Rolf said, is on that south, uh, southeast corner of the building. And then, there's that extension of the roof line, um, which I guess would be a gallery, per the language that we've been talking about, uh, comes forward sort of in the middle of the facade. And I think that would, you, you tell me, Rolf, I think that would clearly meet this requirement, that it's more than a two-foot change in plane. But I guess that's a good question that Maggie's asking, is, when you say change in plane, is that what you mean, or, or do you mean the actual sort of main interior building wall, uh, moving by two feet?
No, um, you know, it's good that Maggie made the point, but I, uh, after, yeah, thinking about it just a little bit, I, I think, yeah, the intent would be that porches or arcades or they also represent, um, you know, oftentimes a substantial change in plane. You remember that porch on the, uh, on the old, uh, it looked like a hotel in Gergens, you know, adjoining the green, um, you know, I would argue, you know, that certainly meets, uh, the intent of what we're talking about, you know?
Hi, this is Barbara. I have a question. Are we talking just the frontage, the face? No, the part of the building that faces the road, because Kinney has a long wall in the parking lot that is only broken up by high windows with a, like a little awning over them.
Yeah, I, I think the intent was to talk about street frontage, yeah, where, where a building meets the street. I don't think we were, yeah, I, I'm not sure. Alex can probably answer better than I.
No, no, I would have said the same thing, Rolf. This is Alex, that yes, the, the way it's written and the way we've been talking about this, the, the, the principal area to apply many of these design standards is the, is sort of the public streetscape and, and the sphere that, that people interact with most regularly, not necessarily every side of the building.
Okay, that, that, Barbara, again, the parking lot certainly is an area that people interact with probably more frequently than the front side, but I would have to sit there and watch.
This, this is John. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I, I think Barbara's right, that the space that the public moves into and out of, it need, needs a, a dressing when that occurs. If, if it doesn't, if there are just, uh, some open space between two sides of a building, and it's not really public space, um, the, the public doesn't have any reason to go in there, that's, that's different in, in the case of Kinney's. They, that facade gets as much, uh, viewing hours as the, the main road, or something close to it, certainly.
Yeah, I, this is Alex. I'd like to push back a little bit on that. It's true that from a customer standpoint, there's probably just as many people, um, interfacing with that side wall of the Kinney's building that faces the parking lot. But I think most of the community is seeing that building principally from the street as they either walk by or drive by.
I, I still agree.
But they're just passersby, and...
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Yeah, that's typically where the form-based codes that we've looked at from other communities focus their attention, is the place where the public is, is, is seeing and interfacing with the building, not just the, not just the customers and clientele.
Right, I, I, I agree with, with the, basically the fact that more people see that 116 facade than see the other side where the parking lot is. But is there something, uh, amiss if we address that facade as well? Even though typically, it's not, uh, what you've seen in form-based codes, so ours isn't going to be typical. It's going to have that difference to it, because we recognize, we're, we're asking people to come into that space by saying, "That's where you put your parking, there or in the rear of the building." I think it's an obligation to say, along with that, you make that a pleasant environment for the people who are in there, and that includes whether it's a blank wall, uh, or whether it has some penetrations, or some in-and-out, or, or different, uh, materials, somehow to not have it be just a flat wall, same surface, nothing else. That, that's how I feel about it.
Uh, Maggie here, and, you know, I, I have to agree. I, um, you know, we, we, we are designing for a walkable community. That's, um, that's in our, in our town plan. And if we're requiring side or rear yard parking, then, uh, um, you know, picture the, the parking on the side and customers, that, you know, of not necessarily Kinney, but of any large, um, building. So, uh, customers would have to walk along that side and before reaching the, reaching the front, as in the Kinney situation, and, um, that's exactly what, I mean, I think that is what we're designing for, is, is not just for cars. We're divining, we're designing for pedestrians.
What does it say, Alex, in the, uh...
Sorry, Rolf, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt. Is, is there a protocol?
I'm sorry, I keep...
All right. We, I was in one meeting the other day, you guys, and there was some method for raising up your hand. Was, was that, was that this meeting, or was that something else? You, you pushed a button?
There is a way to do that, but it's kind of a pain, because you have to have the list of participants up front.
Yeah, it seemed like a pain. I didn't catch up on that one until the end of the meeting. I was wondering why nobody was listening to me, so...
I'm, I'm only on a phone. Are you guys seeing the meeting, uh, on your computer screen?
Oh, yeah, you should see, John, what some people have on. I mean, it's unbelievable.
Or not, as the case may be.
Or not, right. I just got out of the shower, actually, no.
Yeah, you phone people or something, you know?
Yeah, I, I haven't been able to connect through my computer. I don't know why.
Well, I was going to ask Alex, I guess, um, what does it actually say? Does it, does it make reference in the regulations to the principal facade, or, um, how is that, how is that phrase, you know, Alex? Do you have it nearby, or...
Yeah, I have it. In the draft that we've been reviewing, um, this particular design standard that we're talking about, which is the front facade's maximum length, is, it, it says, "A building's front facade shall not exceed 100 feet." So, um, and that front facade shall be interrupted at intervals of 25 feet or less by a change in plane, or an entry, or a passage through. So it does refer to the front facade, and, 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 and we define that in zoning as, as the side that faces the street. Some buildings have, have multiple front facades if they're a corner lot and they face multiple streets. But otherwise, typically, a building has one front facade, and that is facing the street.
Yeah, so in the case of, say, the Bristol Bakery, um, which turns the corner and goes down another little street that's on a corner, um, I mean, I understand what, uh, John and Maggie or, and Barbara are talking about. Because, um, is, do you think there's some terminology, I guess is what I'm looking for, that rather than principal facade, rather than any facade that interacts with, um, you know, a major public right-of-way or a major public space? I mean, how, how one categorizes the parking lot that sits there? And we are mandating that kind of arrangement for parking, so it does make some sense to address, uh, how one gets in and how one feels as you're getting to the building from there. I'm wondering if, you know, in situations like that, um, I mean, you, you'd, you'd hate to, there's certainly lots of situations where there's a principal facade, and okay, it's the most viewed facade, and it's where people come in most of the time, but then there are also probably lots of situations where they may not be on a major street, but they might be on, you know, and call it a, a public alley or a public parking space like that is.
Think of Lam...
Yeah, you wouldn't, yeah, Lampman's is certainly one that turns the corner, but, you know, Lampman's is a good example. I mean, at some point, it gets ridiculous, because we're telling them, uh, that all four, assuming that it only has four, all four facades of the building at some point, because even when you go up the back alley at Lampman's, I mean, that's not a visual dream, but, um, you know, it, uh, how far do you go, I guess, is the question?
Right, and it is, you know, it is 100, we're talking 100 feet. I mean, we haven't even discussed the, the, the length yet that we're, we want, but 100 is not, you know, you said it, the front of Kinney's is about 100?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Right, and, and let's be clear that Lampman's is approximately 200 feet long as a building, or deep. So if we were to apply the 100, we couldn't apply it to that dimension of a lot, of, of a lo, of a, a long linear building. So we would need a different metric for defining the maximum length of a building, unless the articulation of the building is, is more important than the maximum length. So, so just to be clear, the language that Rolf helped draft does two things. It restricts the maximum length of the, of the building along the front facade, so those buildings can't be more than 100 feet. Then it goes on to say, um, as long as you're less than 100 feet, you still have to break it up every 25 feet with some sort of change in plane or entry or what have you. So we could play with either of those, increase the maximum length to more than 100, change the interval for breaks of plane. I mean, like Rolf said, I don't think there's any magic with the numbers, but he did, he did provide some examples in town that makes the 100 feet maybe feel a bit comfortable from a streetscape perspective.
Alex, do you know the length of the long arm of, uh, Firehouse Plaza, the one that's perpendicular to 116, where, where most of the shops are? Do you know how long that is?
I have my map up, so I can measure it right now. Um, so this is the, the long arm that...
Yeah, that comes out toward the firehouse.
Gotcha. Hold on just a sec.
I mean, there's a situation where there are multiple doors, and at one time, every door went into a different store. So, uh, a, a lot of activity, a lot of people moving in and out along that, uh, that facade. And I realize that, that's a corner there, but...
Yep.
Just in terms of multiple, how many stores can fit in 100 feet, small stores, uh, and...
So that, that, um, facade of the building, which is, which is where Obeshan is, and the, the liquor store, and...
Yep.
Um, the Dragon House.
And the Chinese store.
Yeah, um, that's about 190 feet, so about 190.
Almost, almost 200 feet right there.
Correct.
You said 180?
Interesting.
190.
190. Interesting.
And I think that's a good one to bring up, John, because, uh,
Yeah.
It's a, it's a building that, that we've talked about in terms of, uh, its architecture and, and perhaps the lack of articulation or, uh, visual interest, um, with how it was built. And so, Rolf, you're, the language that you proposed that said, uh, every 25 feet, you need to have a break in plane or an entryway, for these sorts of, uh, I don't know what you might call them, mini-mart plazas or what have you, uh, there, it might meet that test for entryways every 25 feet, but not actually hit the architectural design that we're hoping for, because it's still a flat facade with, um, with just doors every so often.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that, that particular elevation has, uh, some, some decent cover on it, you know, in the form of a...
Yeah.
A porch, uh, which, which helps. Yeah, it's, it's like I said, I think you're wise to bring that up, uh, because there's certainly situations like that where, uh, I, I mean, I'm, architecturally, I'm not a big fan of that building necessarily, but I could certainly see that building, um, presuming that it was, that, that was actually frontage on a road. Even at 190 feet, imagine it maybe more than just one story. I, 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 I guess that calls into question, you know, the, the restriction on length, because I, I think you could, you could do 190-foot-long structure, and if the kind of change in plane or articulation, or entry, or alleyways, or whatever, are handled well, um, I think that 190 feet could be made more than, uh, more than tolerable. In fact, one could make it good, you know?
And handled, I think handled as well.
I said at the outset, I think this deserves some scrutiny. Don't, don't take my word for it, it's just a...
Well, Rolf, I mean, even thinking of the, uh, the sketch you did of, um, you know, 40 years from now, 116 from, uh, Public House, and, and, uh, as I'm recalling, it, it was a, a bank of stores, but each one was artic-articulated as a, as an individual building, but they attached, um, and there were one or two, either alleyway or parking in the back, but, um...
Yep.
Yeah, two, two story, and...
They were, those were definitely separate, those were separate buildings? No, I think there was a version that was separate buildings, and another where there was just a very clear inset, uh, into the facade be-between what could have been two freestanding buildings. I'm concerned about what has happened on, uh, in, in Taff Corners on the west side, when you're going in before you can turn into the, the stoplight into the two shopping areas. There's this attempt to have variety between these different facades, and I, I just think it failed totally.
Well, that, that, it, that has a, um, I think, a vision eye center and, uh, there are a couple of standards. Yeah, that, that is a, that is a stock, um, you can go to Erie, Pennsylvania, you can go to, you know, Montana, you'll find that exact same...
Yep.
Building with the exact same, uh, uh, chain stores all across the country. So it's that, that sort of a faux, um, you know, um...
Old-town look.
Yeah, faux, faux variety.
Bristol, Vermont.
So, so that was a question... So, so that was a question, um, remember when we all walked around Finney Crossing? In that Taff Corners area? And I remember looking at buildings that, that had, again, sort of a, of faux, just, you know, separate planes set back, but they weren't, uh, they certainly weren't two feet. Do you, do you have any, any, do you remember at all how, how far set back those, um, separate planes were in some of those buildings? I'm kind of vague here, but.
Maggie, this is Alex. I, I think I remember the buildings that you speak of from Finney Crossing. And I remember thinking that what some of them had was a, a slight, um, protrusion at the midpoint of the building, sort of at the top of the first floor that gave the look of a, of a slight overhang. And that may have been two feet, uh, but that the actual, uh, principal wall of the building was just flat. And this was just a, something tacked on to it. Uh, I will tell you, Ralph, that, um, I looked at, I'm trying to remember which municipality it was. It was probably, uh, Braderboro. Um, I looked at their language on this and I think they used four feet instead of two feet for that break of, uh, of plane. Uh, and I don't, like, like you said, I don't know that there's magic here, but I think you'd want to avoid, um, a number so low that it could be, uh, met with, um, something that looked pasted on to the building rather than an integral sort of, um, architecture of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But could, could I show you another building in town just to get your impression? So let me do a screen share of my GIS here. I want to show you the Neztek building because I think it, it's one of those buildings that may speak to this question that John raised and Maggie concurred on, which is how do you address the architecture of, of the non-street sides of the building that people are interfacing with?
That's a good example.
Yeah, that is a good, uh, good one.
So if you can see on screen, um, the, uh, let's see here, get my annotation up. So here's the Neztek building and, um, the frontage of the building, the front facade is about ninety feet, maybe a little more. And all of you have walked by that building, I'm sure, many times. Uh, the Fuldesses who, who owned it, or I believe actually still own it, have done just a fabulous job, I think. This is, this is subjective, but personally I think they've done a fabulous job with the frontage uh, in terms of landscaping and, and making the front of what is an industrial building look welcoming in terms of the, 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 the materials that were used and all of that. But then as you proceed down the side of the building, um, which is quite long here, it's, it's a very different, you know, sort of style. And it's not designed to present itself to the public as much as it's designed to be functional. And yes, there's a parking area and, and granted, there isn't really a pedestrian way back here. So in that sense, it's not quite the same as the Kinney's example that we were talking about earlier. But to some extent, I just want to caution you about, again, like Ralph said, trying to enforce that larger buildings, have all the aesthetic appeal from all, you know, three, two to three to four sides of the building. It's, it can be difficult to accomplish. Um, and if you can accomplish what, what I think this building does from the front, haven't, haven't we, haven't we done a good job? Like, isn't that an attractive thing to walk by?
Well, I think another factor too, Alex, to keep in mind, uh, for all of us is, you know, um, this is, you know, the way Commerce Park has evolved and, uh, developed over time. One of the other, um, discussable items that I think we haven't really touched on yet is the dimension of, you know, say for example, the veterinary clinic there, um, or Neztek. Both of them, their front facade is some proportion of the total lot width. And I think that's the other thing that we're talking about potentially is, um, mandating that a certain percentage of the frontage of a particular lot, um, be fronted on by a building. I, I, I don't know, was that part of what, what you parked in my lap a little bit, Alex, or?
Yes, yes, the next, the next standard, this is Alex, the next standard that we're talking about is this, uh, minimum frontage buildout and, and that's the language that you worked on and I tweaked a bit.
Yeah, so, and those three, the, the, the two we're talking about, the length of the building, how in substance does that building get, uh, broken up in, in a, in a credible way? And, um, and then what percentage of the lot frontage needs to in fact be fronted on by a building? They, they all sort of interact and, uh, by no means do I think I have the answer to how that should get done. I, I think it's a little bit trial and error, you know, it's, it's kind of this discussion, but it's also maybe doing a little more, um, precise looking, which I confess maybe I didn't do as well as I should have, you know?
I, I, I have to, I have to chime in in, in terms of, I disagree with Alex that this is difficult to do, to design a building that has a pleasant facade on all of its sides, four or whatever. That, that depends on the quality of the design, uh, the quality of the people creating that, that image. Not on the difficulty of doing it on the sides or the back, uh, of a building. So I don't think we should back off from it, from requiring some attention, particularly to the facade that the public interacts with, whether it's from a main street or from a corner or from three sides, the front and two sides, whatever. I think of houses through the village. I don't think the builders of those houses were just trying to present a nice facade for the main road. I think they were trying to create an environment around that house, including the house, that was pleasant and satisfying and, and enriching. I mean, that's how I think about it.
Uh, this is Barbara. I would agree with that, John, that there's no reason why buildings have to look like a warehouse on the sides that the public doesn't see very often. If it could be as simple as some landscaping, but as we're talking about setbacks, I think as Alex pointed out, two feet might be not enough. Maybe the fourth setback may be a better thing. Uh, I'm thinking of a, a building I saw somewhere in Canada recently. It was an apartment building, maybe four or five stories. And the dining room of each apartment was, was jutted out, like cantilevered out from the side of the building, giving it a lot of texture and interesting detail. It was a, a window from floor to ceiling and you could see the table in the living room or the kitchen air, whatever, the eating area. And it just, it struck me as something very interesting. So it was a simple, you know, box building, but it had the texture and interesting detail for people passing by. So I think we need to be concerned about it. I'm done.
I, I, I agree with the, um, with the four feet, um, the four feet setback, um, that's not the right word, but, um, I, I guess I'm, I, I would kind of like to go back and talk about the one hundred feet. I'm, I'm just, you know, I've just been going around the village and, um, you know, it's, it's, it's tough, as, as Barbara said, not, not wanting these monolithic facades, especially in a, um, in the village setting. But then I, you know, up and down Commerce Street, I, I was looking at Tailhook and, um, I can't remember how to do the length thing, Alex, but, um, I'm pretty sure Tailhook is, um, longer than one hundred.
So Maggie, if you're using Google Maps, um, it's as simple as right-clicking with your mouse and then selecting measure distance. And then you can left-click on the point you want to measure to and it'll tell you the distance.
Okay, so Tailhook is a hundred and twenty-one feet.
Way to go, Maggie.
I know.
God.
So exciting.
Who says that planning mission isn't comprised of smart people?
Yeah, this is all I'm gonna do now, um, measure things, um.
That's funny and I can't even see it.
Yeah.
We'll have a little, we'll have a little measuring party. Yeah.
Well, this is Barbara again, who's just on the side. I don't know if you can look out your window and see the sunset, but it's absolutely gorgeous.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have time to look at sunsets, I'm busy measuring. Sorry. So how do, how do people feel about the, about the one hundred feet? Is that a, is that a reasonable, uh, distance for our village?
Well, this is Barbara. I personally wouldn't want to get much bigger than that. It, it seems to be a, a decent number for a good sized building without becoming a, um, like a Neztek monolith. So I'm done.
If, uh, I guess if we have a, um, a carve-out for, uh, you know, multi, multi-store, um, also looking at the Blanks, um, little sh- shopping center on Mechanicsville Road.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a lot of in and out in, on that facade, on the blue mall.
There are, yeah.
This is Alex.
Roofs and in and out walls, I mean, literally.
This is Alex, and so I think John's raising a good point. Is it okay to have a, a facade that's longer than a hundred feet? If it has, you know, significant ins and outs, changes of plane, entryways, multiple entryways, that sort of thing?
And it has the covered porch, which I think makes, makes a difference.
I'm, I'm also curious, uh, I, I don't have the, the plans up, so it's hard for me to measure them. But I'm kind of curious, um, what the senior housing building that, uh, is proposed as part of the Haystack Crossing project, what its length, uh, will be. It's going to be on a corner lot, so it's going to have two front facades. And it's a.
One toward one sixteen.
Building, so I, I'm not sure where it lands in that, uh, is it over a hundred feet? But I think that, I'm, I'm thinking out loud here too, cause like Ralph, I'm not sure what the right answer is here. But, uh, perhaps adding some more flexibility, you know, that says generally under a hundred feet, except, uh, when the building has something above and beyond in terms of, um, change of plane or, or articulation. Or maybe get rid of the hundred feet altogether and just require that change of plane and articulation in a more substantive way. That's, you know, more than two feet, uh, includes, like Maggie said, the, the, the porches and arcades that, uh, a different section we've already talked about requires.
That, that might be something to consider, not having a length limit, but have an articulation prescription or something.
Yeah.
Something.
Well, as, as, as we've chatted about it, I'm, I'm sort of becoming somewhat, uh, convinced isn't quite the right term, but I think maybe the overall length is less important than the articulation in the building front, uh, in, 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 as a percentage of the building lot, you know? Uh, I was just going through some of my photographs from a trip I took out west as I was telling you about. There's definitely some facades in this smaller community that are longer than a hundred feet and broken up nicely, well-designed as John was talking about, um, and feels like a place you'd want to be, you know? So.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe the length of the building isn't, uh, so critical, it's how well we articulate, um, um, you know, how those facades ought to be dealt with. With, with a real eye on, on what, uh, what, what Barbara or somebody brought up about, um, that business in, uh, in Williston where, um, you know, there's this, some sort of formula for, uh, you know, and it's a lot of bad expectations on the part of DRBs and planning commissions that drive people in that direction oftentimes. Because I know in Burlington, they did that big student housing project on St. Paul Street.
Yeah.
I don't know how many people are familiar with it. Well, it went through several iterations. The first one looked like somebody had, some kindergartner had, um, gone at the thing. Um, actually, if it had been a kindergartner, it might have been better. And it was just this arbitrary change in material, um, that had no, other than just sort of being able to say, well, you know, we're changing up the facade, you know? And it, it, it rang completely hollow. So anyway, I, I think meaningful language that, um, either describes, you know, the dimension of those setbacks or, um, porches and coverage, I know this is all a little bit vague maybe, but I think that's maybe more the direction we pursue than mandating a length.
Have we seen anything? Excuse me, go ahead.
That was my impression of, uh, uh, getting back to the Finney Crossing buildings that, that it was just a token, oh, they, they want a variety of textures, they want a variety of, um, you know, some, some sort of variety on the front. And so they put in these token sort of faux features, um.
Clued on.
Yeah, and I, and I would very much like to move from that to real architectural fe- features. And I, I don't know what kind of language would do that. Something like the four feet that, that Alex mentioned seems like a good start.
I keep, we keep going back to Obashan as an example, but the fact that that's two hundred feet long, if I imagine that had been split into three facades along the front, if the center was set back to four feet, well, now it's, now it's got more depth. It's more like three buildings and it's two hundred feet long. But if you had three sixty-foot, um, faces, to me, it would be, it would be satisfying. To think about it that way. I, I would agree that maybe, you know, a hundred feet isn't necessarily what we're necessarily after. It's, it's more, uh, a span without a change.
Yeah.
Can I show you a couple of images from Google Street View of what we were just talking about? I, I quickly went and found the St. Paul Street, uh, project that Ralph was referencing. And then it's really interesting to look at the difference between that and the Finney Crossing example. Maggie, can I do a screen share, is that all right? Okay, uh, hold on, see if I can make this work. So here is, um, the St. Paul Street construction. And Ralph, correct me if I'm not in the right place, but I think, I think this is it.
Yep.
And obviously it's, it's under construction, so it's not all finished. And obviously it's, it's under construction, so it's not all finished, but you can see the, I, I'll pan around a little bit, um, Rolf, if it'll let me, yeah. You can see the way there are certain bump outs of, you know, panel portions of the building, um, and then at the, uh, at street level, it's a little hard to tell, cause we haven't, not finished yet, but, um, you see that sort of, uh, things jutting out, the ins and outs that we talked about, um, that sort of thing. And then if I jump to Finney Crossing, and this is Zephyr, Zephyr Road, thi- this is kind of what I, what I was trying to describe, is that it looks very much like a flat building facade, where, you know, they have, they have what would, what almost wants to be a front porch, um, but it's just sort of tacked on to the, to that building frontage, and it's very narrow. Um, it's probably more than two feet, I'm guessing, but, but not much. Um, and as, as you see, as you move down, you have very little in the way of these sort of art, brick archways that lead to windows and, and a similar thing. I don't know, to me, it's a different style of construction and different materials, so, and it's, it's a lower profile, but the difference between that and, you know, what was done on St. Paul Street seems somewhat significant. Not sure if that helps at all, but thought it was fun to look at.
Well, this is Barbara. Since I can't see it, does anyone have a comment on a preference of what Alex is showing you?
I'm gonna say this, this is Marie. I honestly think that the St. Paul Street, even though you guys, you architects, were not liking it, I think, that it's better looking than Finney Crossing. I think Finney Crossing is so cheap looking. That's not a good word, probably. Just looks like that, those buildings just look like nothing. Very inexpensively built. And I know we're not talking about money, but that's my description.
Hmm, thank you, Marie.
You're welcome.
I, I agree completely. Um, the, the St. Paul buildings, um, I don't know how, how deep those bump outs were. They didn't seem to be four feet, or some of them I think were, but, um.
I think more like two feet, Maggie, personally, the, the smaller ones.
But I, I found that much more visually, um, interesting and, uh, had far more character than the Finney Crossing, which is just, yeah, just pasted together.
Thank you. Yep, agreed.
So, so how do we, how do we get something that's, that's, has character, um, as opposed to a Finney Crossing type, type thing?
Hmm. Good question.
Um, well, what I'm hearing, uh, is that it has much more to do with how the facade of the building is articulated and differentiated than it does with the maximum length or, or any particular length, and that maybe, uh, we need to task Rolf, uh, who helped come up with this language, uh, to, to think about way to improve that, to, to be, to focus on what's maybe more significant and important on that articulation, depth, uh, frequency of, of the plane breaking, um, maybe in relationship to height and, and overall length of the building. I, I assume there's some proportionality there, that, you know, the, 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 the lesser the facade length is, the, the fewer breaks you need, and so the language you drafted, Rolf, said every twenty-five feet, there needs to be a change. Um, I'm not sure if that's the right metric, or if it should be proportional to the overall length, uh.
Okay.
You, do you want to take another crack at it, Rolf? I'm happy to.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, that would be good, and I, I guess I'd ask people what they think as far as, uh, not that length issue so much, but what I can see is that what's starting to happen in the, let's call it the more urban future of Heinsberg over the next fifty years, um, that it's that interplay of, um, you know, enriching the facade by sort of changing planes, by, by meaningfully changing material, by providing the kind of, uh, cover and protection for pedestrians who, um, uh, want to feel better about, you know, navigating undercover at times, um. Then in conjunction, that one with, with the percentage of the building frontage, um, and, and also the mandate that we more or less have, that, uh, we've got sort of a build-to line that we've been talking about, i.e. in the way of proximity to the street in the first place, so that you're really starting to get a continuous facade, which is what we're looking at, or, or, or hoping for, but, um, it's got some richness and it's, it's not, uh, some humdrum length of, uh, um, of building. I, I guess I'm willing to take another crack at it, you're right, yes.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Expand, expand it, expand it as, as much as you're comfortable with, beyond what we've just now talked about, Rolf, you, you, you're sensitive to these kind of things, you could put some more stuff in there. I keep thinking of back when we had, uh, a discussion with some consultants, two women came in and talked to us about what was important in defining our village, and edge was one of them, and if there's anything that defines an edge of our, our highway road system, it's the building facades themselves, so, this, we're following advice that we've gotten, uh, a year or more ago. I think it's good.
So if Rolf has been charged with that, um, can we, sorry Maggie, I saw you trying to speak, so I was going to unmute you, but it's not letting me do that. Can you unmute yourself, Maggie?
Yeah, no, just keep going.
Okay, sorry. Um, so if Rolf is charged with, with, uh, honing in on the, the, uh, front facade articulation, uh, piece, um, we should talk about the second piece, which is this minimum frontage build-out, cause as Rolf said, they're very linked. I have some concerns about that and how they work, how they work together, but it's definitely a feature that was in, uh, a couple of the other, um, form-based codes that we looked at, and, and, and it, and it's a, it's a good, it's a good idea. Um, before we jump into that, though, I heard a lot of you agreeing that it should not just be the, the street-facing side of the building or the site that, that should be, uh, addressed from an aesthetic standpoint, that you felt that the interior of the site where people were interfacing with the property through parking areas and pedestrian ways should be addressed as well. So, given that, um, I'm gonna have to look back at the standards we've already discussed, almost all of them are focused on the street side, uh, in terms of landscaping and minimum and maximum setbacks, uh, and, um, permeability and those sorts of things. They're all, they've all been drafted to refer to the street-facing sides of buildings, uh, so I'll, I'll just need to go back through and see where I can tweak things a bit, uh.
Good point, good point, Alex.
Is there anyone who's willing to volunteer to, you know, sort of work with me on that? And, cause you all had to convince me you needed to do that, so I think one of you needs to help me.
I, I can volunteer, Alex.
Okay.
This is John.
Thank you, John.
So.
We disagree, we disagree with one another, so that's probably a good pairing.
Yeah, I, I respect what Bar- I, I respect what all of you said, of course, but I respect what Barbara said, that, um, if it's, if it, if it's difficult to do it architecturally, at the very least, we could address it through, with landscaping.
Land- uh, that's what I was gonna say, at, at landscaping at the very least, um, to give the pedestrians some, something to hold on to, you know, I think, other than just a blank wall.
Yeah, I think that landscaping and fenestration, meaning, uh, placement of windows, uh, might, might be the ticket there, but I'll, I'll work with John, see if we can't batter on some ideas, uh, for the next draft.
Okay, so.
Many, many architects are very fond of growing vines on their building facades to, to deal with those blank surfaces.
Okay, so why don't we, um, move on to the minimum, minimum frontage, um, and it looks like we may not get to, um, get to the retail cap tonight, actually, um.
It is, uh, eight oh six, Maggie, and I just put the agenda up on screen. So, so you can see where we are and.
Yeah, no, I, we, we, actually, I might push it a little bit. I think stopping at eight, eight, eight twenty-five might be a little, a little early, or you're, you're, you're thinking everyone needs to get to bed by nine, so.
No, I, to be honest, I'm thinking that sometimes these remote meetings can be a bit more draining, but, um, last meeting, uh, I think it went really well, and all of you seemed to be very engaged, and so far, everyone seems to be as well, so maybe you can push it, sure.
Okay, we'll push it, and then for the last ten minutes, um, we'll have, uh, puppy time at Dennis's place, so. Show us your pets, uh, all right. Um, so the last item.
Right, so again, Rolf put some language together, and as I said, this is related to the minimum amount of frontage that a lot needs to have a building on. So imagine a vacant lot that's a hundred feet wide, has a hundred feet of frontage, and this requirement says that a minimum of forty percent of the lot frontage has to have, uh, has to be occupied by structures. So if there were just one structure on the lot, doesn't have to be just one, but if it was just one, uh, that one hundred foot wide lot would need to have a building that was at least forty feet long, forty feet wide. And the idea behind this is to ensure that, that the streetscape is a lively place and that there aren't voids and sort of dead spots, uh, within lots. If you're looking at draft, draft four, that was included in your packet, the language on page six, there's a bunch of text in italics where, um, I qualified what's been drafted, cause I tweaked what Rolf wrote, uh, and explained a couple of concerns, but, uh, also noted what some of the other communities had done on this, this sort, sort of standard.
Uh, this is Denver. Personally, I'd feel like if there was a thirty-foot house on a hundred-foot lot, it wouldn't, uh, take away from the streetscape all that much. I, um, I think ultimately that the environment and the experience comes from the density of lots itself. Like, okay, if you have a street that has, um, five hundred-foot lots on it, it's, the experience of walking down it is probably going to be pretty similar regardless of whether it's a forty-foot, forty-foot house in the front yard. So, I, I, um, would be interested in hearing some other conversation about, you know, why this would be necessary and why, you know, what it, what it would impact.
What do you think, Rolf? You, you helped draft it, you looked at some of the other, uh, communities that had a similar standard. Do you think this is critical, and what, what do you see it accomplishing?
Yeah, can you, can you guys hear me? Um, you've really been going in and out. I got the gist of what Denver was saying, you know, basically questioning, "Hey, is this necessary?" Um, are you hearing me? What?
Yes.
This is John, I can hear you.
Yeah, Barbara can too.
How about you, Alex?
Yes, I can hear you, Rolf. Denver, you were a bit soft, but I heard what you were saying.
Okay. It's telling me my bandwidth is low, I'm not sure what that means exactly.
Welcome to the brave new age of remote meetings.
Uh, try killing your video, uh, it helps me.
Oh, okay. So just that button that says stop video?
Down in the lower left-hand corner.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I just did that. Right. Um, well, I, I think, you know, the, the idea is that, um, for, for portions of our community, um, where we want to, um, um, increase, say for example, um, uh, the health of the pedestrian environment, I mean, you're getting a biased opinion here, Denver, so, so take that along, you know? Um, but even say for example, well, if you were to look at, uh, go from Good Times, say for example, to Lantman's and beyond, there's a historic pattern there that, um, um, you know, most of that length, the exception is when they tore down the old St. Jude's Church, most of the length has, has a repetition of, you know, in, in that, that particular case, it's mostly small-scale, uh, residential-type structures, until you get to Lantman's and a little bit beyond there. Um, but, you know, um, it's like a curtain, um, you know, most of that curtain is drawn, let's say, um, and, and, uh, those little white houses, most of them happen to be white, are all more or less, um, the same distance from the street and sidewalk, and they definitely occupy a certain percentage of the lot width. Usually the lot width is, uh, fairly modest there, and you've got a driveway, um, between that and the next house, and then you have a rear yard and all that sort of stuff, but it definitely, um, now that, that historically has been perhaps more of a residential, uh, place, but it's, it's increasingly becoming more commercial in nature with offices and stuff like that. But, um, so that's a good example. Say for example, if you translate that into the commercial realm, uh, where you've got, uh, some stores and things going on and people sitting outside, you can imagine that, um, even the forty percent that Alex, um, I think it was, the forty percent was probably something like, did that come from me, Alex?
So, Rolf, in your original draft, you had suggested sixty percent, except in the purely residential districts where it would drop to forty percent. I tweaked that to make it forty percent everywhere.
Okay, ha, aha! So, um, so that's actually a good example, because I think when you said forty percent, I couldn't remember what I'd said. Um, uh, that's, um, an advantage of a dull memory. Um, um, and I, I think for commercial endeavors, uh, to be somewhat credible, I think that percentage becomes really important, because, uh, you know, it's adverse weather or something like that, for you to sort of, uh, have to gallop to the next commercial location is often what drives people back into their cars, you know, so, um, it's really, um, I, I think in terms of commercial vitality, um, for something that we might try to envision as a, as a kind of, uh, downtown in our village, um, um, I think this is kind of a critical, uh, conversation, um, and what that percentage is, you know, there's probably gonna have to be exceptions, you know, cause there, there are probably gonna be some, um, um, circumstances that just, um, don't allow for that kind of mandate, but, um, I don't know, does that make any sense to you, Denver?
Yeah, it makes sense if we're trying, if we're trying to build a, a downtown environment where you.
Yep.
I do, it makes perfect sense. Uh, if somebody, that, that only leaves me the question, if someone are going to buy a hundred feet of road frontage and only put fifty feet of building down it, do we need to control for it?
Yeah. Um, yeah, hard. Yeah, hard to say, you know, probably, I'm not sure, not sure.
I just, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Well, I look at, you know, just looking at Commerce Park, and I was just looking at the Animal Hospital of Heinsberg, that's less than half, maybe a little more like a third of the lot. And just wondering, you know, how many, and I don't know what their intentions are, but how many businesses might buy 100, you know, a lot of a certain width and build what they can with the intention of expanding down the road?
Yeah.
Maybe that's what Animal Hospital did, I have no idea.
Yeah.
So I'm just tossing that out. I also want to read a section that we just went over, I think our last meeting or the meeting before. Streetscape details shall be designed to encourage pedestrian activity and provide visual interest. And for non-residential and mixed-use buildings set back from the street, landscaping shall be more robust and integrated with hardscape features, for example, seating, artwork, et cetera, to create an inviting pedestrian-friendly space. So I think that helps a little bit in terms of the, but I do understand what you're saying, Rolf. I just, anyway, I just wanted to throw those two out.
One thing that does happen, especially for single-use commercial development, is you can have a building, let's say, a Dollar General, located on a lot and present itself along the frontage the way, you know, it's supposed to, but have a good chunk of that frontage to the side of the building occupied by a parking lot. So I think part of the intention in this, at least the way I read it in Brattleboro's regulations and Westford's to some degree, but I think especially in Brattleboro, they're very specific about how much of the front yard space can be utilized for driveway, for parking and all of that. And this minimum frontage buildout helps ensure that the building is a substantial part of that frontage and not necessarily a parking lot, which, I'm not talking about a front yard parking area, I'm talking about a side yard parking area that's not in front of the building but is right next to it and occupies a good chunk of the frontage, but, you know, at or behind the front face of the building. So again, in Brattleboro, I think they use this in one way to ensure that parking is more to the rear and is not a frontage sort of feature. That said, you know, to really utilize that tool, then I think Rolf's initial suggestion of a 60% minimum frontage buildout, you know, would do a better job. 40% potentially, you could have more of the frontage occupied by side yard parking than the building itself. But we are in a rural village that we're densifying and growing. We're not in a downtown area. We're not in a city center like Burlington or Brattleboro. So that's where I thought maybe the percentages could be a bit lower, but maybe at some point they become irrelevant if they're too low, I'm not sure.
Is there, go ahead, Rolf.
Kinney's becomes a good example again, where if you think that you have a cafe and then a parking lot and then Kinney's, if you consider, would you really want, if you had a lot for the cafe and a lot for the Kinney's, and each of them had 60% of that frontage along 116 as parking lot, that would be a long walk between the cafe and the Kinney's. And I think the proportions that we've got there now are appropriate. There's not a vast span of sidewalk where you're walking beside parking lot. You can go from one store to the other, and there's, you know, a couple of, a few car lengths in between it. So I think it does, it makes more and more sense to me that you don't want these vast spans of parking lot where there's no building that you might be going to. So that's a little bit of perspective for me, is to think about that 100 feet of Kinney's. If you assume half the parking lot is for that and half of it is for the park side, it puts things into a little different perspective.
Yeah, I think actually, even though that's a new example, that's a good example, you know, and probably Kinney's, I suspect, you know, it was all developed by, I think, the same outfit, but let's hypothetically assume that the property line between Kinney's and the Bagel Bakery or Parkside, you know, runs down the middle of the parking lot, that's probably about 40 feet, I suspect, from building facade, the side building facade of Kinney's to the center line of the parking. Now, I'll bet that Kinney's owns all the way to Patrick Brook, I suspect. So even there, that 100 feet, you know, I'll bet, well, who knows? Might be 60%, might be 50%. If you go to the park side on the other side, the building probably comes much closer to represent something like 60 or 70% of that lot frontage. If you, again, went from the center of the parking lot all the way to the corner of the lot down there by whatever that street is called.
Farmall.
That goes into, yeah, Farmall Drive.
Yeah.
So that probably meets that 40% or, well, well, Parkside, I would imagine, comes very close to 60 or more. Technically, I guess, Kinney's might not, you know? But it's, yeah, it's, I guess, it's a good example that you bring up there, Denver, because I think you can imagine if those two buildings get further apart than what you see there, I, they start to lose their connectivity. I mean, right now, it's not bad, you know? It's not zero lot line zoning by any means, but it's, it's not bad.
We just don't want Walmart parking lot, which I think is the point.
Yeah.
This is Alex. I can show you that Kinney's arrangement if you like, quickly.
Okay.
Okay, let me share a screen here.
I must say, you got the best background, Alex.
Yes, well, if you can guess, Marie guessed where that was when we did a test call, so taking guesses from anyone else too, if you know Heinsberg. Okay, so on your screen is the intersection of Farmall Drive and Route 116. So there's that intersection here.
Yeah.
There's a scribble on the screen. Sorry, John and Barb, but you can't see this, but if you're on Google Maps, you might be... And actually, the way this project was developed, the Kinney Drugs lot does not extend all the way to Patrick Brook. So Kinney Drugs is on its own smaller lot, and the building, I don't know, I'd have to measure it, but I'm guessing the building probably occupies something closer to 60 to 70% of the lot frontage on 116.
Yeah.
The Parkside Cafe, that lot is its own lot, and it doesn't include any of that middle parking area, and so it too occupies probably 70 to 80% of the frontage along Route 116. The parking lot in the middle is actually on its own lot, and so that lot is all the common space, that's how the subdivision was designed. And so this would be an example of a project that would need a waiver, or would need to be going through the planned unit development protocol that allows for waivers, because this lot where the parking lot is doesn't have any building, frontage, any building filling out the frontage, it's 0%. But it makes sense because it's an interstitial space where it's shared parking, and, you know, it's, we could argue about whether it's properly landscaped, but there was an attempt to properly landscape it and add pedestrian facilities. So in any case, what Rolf was saying about overall, I think percentages is probably right, but in this particular example, it's a bit different because of the way the lots were drawn up.
But even with that, you know, even if you threw the parking back into the mix and just split it between the two lots, we're still, I think in both cases, probably awfully close to that 60% number.
Yes, I agree, Rolf.
Probably with the Parkside, it might even be a little bit more.
Hi, guys. Can see me now.
Hey, John.
Yeah.
Hi, Alex.
So I feel like I want to, oh, actually, I think you had that note, Alex, about, shoot, where was that, about what other towns, Jericho, Brattleboro, had, that they were around 40, 50?
Well, so what I wrote was that Westford has a range of 40 to 60%, depending on the zoning district. And I think, yeah, actually, I'm sorry, not Westford, those three towns have a range, Brattleboro, Jericho, and Westford, depending on the zoning district.
So we're proposing that this apply to all of the zoning districts, if I'm not mistaken, within the Village Growth District? Is that correct?
The way it's currently drafted, yes. It would apply to all of the Village Growth Area zoning districts.
Okay, all right. So that's also, I think, a variable here, you know? I can certainly see that in some of these Village Growth districts, yeah, that we would take a different approach depending, you know, this area around Commerce Park and where Kinney's is and south through the historic part of the village, that might be one thing. Does it apply to the northeast, northwest, you know? Might be something we ponder a little bit more.
Are you thinking for northwest, northeast, it would be more or less?
Less. It really, you know, it depends on, hey, where do we want the growth to really happen? Assuming that this will happen in the next 50 years, you know? Because it's there that we try to tighten things up and, you know, that this 60% or whatever the number is, is more in play than in some of the more peripheral areas of the Village Growth District, I guess, you know? That may not have been exactly what was planned, I grant you, but I think, thinking about some of these districts and what makes sense in each one, it's worth considering. I guess I'm willing to look at that piece again too, Alex, if you want to throw that in to the hopper, because I think it's closely tied with some of the other things that we're discussing, you know?
I agree, I think it is tied to the one we had just talked about at some length, no pun intended. So, yeah, that'd be fine, and trying to differentiate by zoning district seems reasonable to me too, so if you had some thoughts on that. I know that the commission, and you especially, Rolf, have expressed some interest in seeing densification of the Village District along 116, where Automotive is located, and the Village Car Sales, and that abandoned building to the south of that on the same side, as well as densification along Commerce Street in what is now the Commercial District. And there's been some talk about maybe changing the zoning for that area to allow more mixed use. So this could be one of the tools, albeit sort of an odd dimensional tool, but it might be one of the tools to require more of a building scape along those major sort of core streetscapes in our village, if we set the number right. And so, you're right, maybe, you know, I downshifted to 40%, you had suggested 60. Maybe in those areas, it should be 60 or higher.
Yeah.
I would, I'm all in favor of adopting a number that applies across the board, if we can say, wow, 50% across the board would provide us what we're looking for in most cases, you know, where we have to minimize the amount of regulations that we have to impose, while we got one for this zone and one for that zone. If we could come up with one, I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah.
Which I expect, Alex, that's why you may have said, wow, you know, we're going to change, adopt this number to 40%.
Yeah, there's no question that sort of universal standards are attractive, you know? It just makes things easier to comprehend and, you know, user-friendly, I guess you could.
Alex, is there a, is there a distinction, and maybe I just missed this, between areas that are, if not 100% residential, all residential, and areas that are commercial in terms of how much of the frontage of a lot we want as a minimum amount for the building facade? I mean, I think of residential areas, there tend to be so much landscaping eventually, not initially, but eventually, people tend to use their yard space to grow things in, and that begins to establish more of a continuous edge along one side. So are we distinguishing between commercial, residential, mixed-use?
So in the draft... In the draft that's in front of you, I took out that differentiation. The draft that Rolf originally put together did differentiate, so he had a 60% minimum frontage buildout for commercial and mixed-use areas, and a 40% for residential only, like the Residential 1 and Residential 2 zoning districts. And I think in the other communities that I mentioned, Brattleboro, Jericho, Westford, there was some differentiation by zoning district, so maybe adding some of that back in and tuning that a bit would make sense. The reason I simplified it was not solely what Denver suggested, that, you know, one size to fit them all for simplicity's sake. It was also a concern about the standard we had just been talking previously about, where if you limit the maximum length of a building facade to 100 feet, but then you require that 60% of the lot frontage have building on it, you start to get very prescriptive about how big a building has to be. And so now that we're moving away potentially from that maximum building length discussion in favor of more articulation details, maybe we can play with these percentages a bit more and differentiate them by zoning district. My other thought is simply that, again, I feel like we're doing a lot of zoning for a denser village, and many of the examples we're looking at are downtowns and maybe even cities. downtowns and just, and maybe even cities. Uh, and we're just never going to be that. I, I, at least that's my, the, the impression I get from the community members who I've heard talk about this and, and have expressed concern at times about just how much we're planning to build out the Village of Heinsberg. So my thought was that in a rural village, yes, you want to have vibrant streetscapes with a, with a buildings that sort of, um, inform them. But maybe it's okay to have more landscaping and, you know, non-built frontage area as well. Um, so it's, it's a balance.
So it, it looks like we're, we're going to be coming back in a couple of weeks to talk about both of these again. Um, and, uh, I think that's okay. Um, Ralph, it's, it seems like we've just thrown all this back in your lap. Um, are you, you're okay with that?
I'm just home. I'm hoping that I won't have to stoke the stove too much longer, so I'll have some extra time.
Okay.
Time to devote, yeah.
All right, um, all right, so, uh, yeah, well, um, we can, uh, return to, return to those two and with any luck, um, finish them up at our next meeting. Sorry, my, I keep slapping my screen because it's, uh, blanking out. Um, okay, so, um, so yeah, we'll return to those two as well as the, the retail cap um, at our next meeting.
Okay.
So, um, so we've got some things for other business, but, uh, next up is the, um, the meeting minutes. And, um, I don't know.
Will you usually approve those at the beginning?
No, they only do that on the DRB and we are definitely not the DRB. We don't do that.
We should do that, but.
We, we think the DRB really should do it our way, which is, um.
Change is good, Maggie.
Uh, so, um, does anyone have anything? Uh, I actually had one. Now I can't find it, um.
For rookie, I thought it was a damn good job.
Yes.
It was.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess I can't find it, so, um, does anyone have any comments, changes?
Nope.
Okay.
No.
No.
A motion?
I'm moved to accept the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Dennis, aye.
Yeah.
I'm staying.
John, aye.
Okay then, um, minutes are approved and let's move on to other business.
Okay, so, um, one of the items was agenda items for May thirteenth. It sounds like we'll be revisiting what we talked about tonight and hopefully finding some time to begin the conversation about the retail, um, size cap. Uh, Marie and I had a conversation about this earlier today and she expressed some concern about, um, how are we going to ensure we get public input on what has been a pretty controversial issue? Especially getting that via these remote meeting, uh, formats. My intention on putting it on the agenda was actually to get you as a commission to talk about it first and then ma- make up our minds as to how we want to reach out to the community. I, you know, I think we will eventually have a public hearing on all of these wonderful architectural and streetscape design, um, regulations, uh, when we get some illustrations done and we have a final draft. Uh, but I think it makes sense and we can talk about this next time. Once the commission has an idea of where you want to go with the retail size cap, to have some community conversation about that maybe first. Uh, and so we'll just need to talk next time about how comfortable you are doing that through this format. Uh, and it's May thirteenth. We'll be two days away from the stay-at-home order expiring, if in fact it expires then. So perhaps there'll be a little more, uh, understanding of how long we're going to need to be in this remote meeting setting. So with that said, um, that's agenda items for May thirteenth. If there's anything else, um, you know, ha- let me know or maybe let Maggie know and she and I talk ahead of time to set the agenda. The, the agenda item I wanted to add was, uh, regarding our zoning administrator. Uh, so, let's see, I sent, Maggie, I sent you an email that I thought was just so, uh, so efficient, I just was going to read it, uh, to the rest of the board. Let me find it here. Right, so, um, uh, our, our zoning administrator is Suzanne Mantegna. Uh, and her three-year term is, uh, as our zoning administrator is up on June first. She is interested in being reappointed, uh, and as her immediate supervisor, I strongly support her reappointment. She's doing a good job and the town would be well-served if she continued as our ZA. Uh, per state statute, uh, the ZA is nominated by the Planning Commission and is appointed by the Select Board for three-year terms. Uh, so you don't need to act tonight if, if you feel like I'm sort of springing this on you. Uh, we can certainly talk about it at the May thirteenth meeting. Um, but if you're comfortable, uh, nominating Suzanne for, for a second term uh, based on my recommendation and what maybe you know of her work, uh, to date, uh, then you'd be welcome to make a motion to that effect and I could forward to the Select Board for action.
Alex, uh, this is, uh, related, but not, not important for our approval. Do you know what her status is in Richmond? Since she has, she has both jobs.
Yeah, so for reference, everyone's reference, Suzanne is a part-time employee with the Town, uh, of Heinsberg. So, uh, she's a twenty-hour-a-week employee in the Planning and Zoning Department. Um, she works Mondays, Tuesdays, and Friday afternoons. And when we hired the position, uh, we worked with the Town of Richmond as they needed a part-time zoning administrator as well. Uh, she was also hired by the Town of Richmond, also for a twenty-hour-a-week, uh, part-time ZA position. And, uh, when we started, we sort of worked it out so that days would, uh, would mesh. Uh, and so she has two jobs that add up to a full end job. And, uh, it's been working really well in my mind, um, from, from Heinsberg's standpoint, she has a different experience set than in Richmond. She actually staffs their DRB in Richmond and she doesn't do that here. Um, in any case, my understanding is she is, her term is also up in Richmond and she's in, she's talking with them about that. Um, so, uh, they haven't acted yet and, um, I, I, I haven't heard anything negative about Suzanne's work in Richmond, um, but the actual status of their sort of negotiations, I, I don't, I don't really know the, the, the full status of that. I do, I do know that here in Heinsberg, she's interested in continuing and is happy in the position. Uh, not to say that someone else might not woo, woo her away sometime because she's, she has some experience now, uh, but I, I-
Does anyone have any objections? To nominating her?
Uh, we nominated Suzanne for the position.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dennis, aye.
Okay, Alex, does that take care of that?
It sure does. Thanks for accommodating, uh, thank you.
Awesome. Uh, is there anything else that anyone, anyone has? Okay, um, if not, then, uh, I hereby close the Planning Commission meeting. Thanks very much, everybody.
Hey, thanks.
Onto the puppies, onto the puppies.
Yeah, Dennis, puppies.
Where are the dogs? Dennis, turn your-